The next item on the agenda is a hearing on the West Reserve Sewer Interceptor excavation permit. And I understand there will be a PowerPoint presentation by the city. Is that correct?
Yes.
Steve, would you like to come forward and be done? And I think we're gonna have to scoot down, otherwise I'm going to be used as a screen.
I wouldn't make a really good screen.
Mike, can you reach right over here? Oh. Then whoever's standing by the door, if you want to hit the light switch, so we can see the PowerPoint better. Thank you.
Still gonna be in it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff members of the public. My name is Steve King. I'm a Missoula City Engineer. Thank you for allowing me to present a brief presentation on the West Reserve Sewer Project. I hope that the presentation will be in conformance with the county excavation policy, the Resolution 2004-105, which requires a public hearing and public hearing notice, environmental considerations, impacts on the physical and human environment, impacts on adjacent properties, impacts on the area being served, public health, welfare, and safety. Consideration of adopted plans and agreements and other matters relating to the proposed project. My presentation will address those issues. Location and scope of the project. West Reserve area located between the Clark Fork River to the north, Middle Root River to the south, and west, Reserve Street to the east. Talking about a phased project including approximately 70,000 millimeter feet of gravity sewer main lines, sewer service line stubs to adjacent properties, and new lift stations associated with the sewer utility expansion. This is an overall map of the area. And then, do I get a cursor? Reserve Street.
Can you push the button?
Okay, there's Reserve Street, Third, Grove, Clemens, Seventh, Humble, Spurgeon area. Well, the green line is a portion of the project that we're looking to bid in 2005. The remainder of the lines on Seventh, Spurgeon, and so on throughout the neighborhood, from South Avenue, 26th, 27th area, Hyberta, connections into Tower Road area. All of these lines would be planned over the next 10 years in phased construction as the project allows for those construction phases in the future. So we're talking about an initial construction phase of what's highlighted in green. The first phase highlighted in green is 18,000 millimeter feet of sewer main, inch-to-eight-inch to 36-inch, on Grove, Third, portions of Clemens, Seventh, Humble, Spurgeon Road, and on private easements in the Humble Road area, and then construction of the West Reserve Lift Station. Future phases are planned over the next 10 years as described. The particulars of the streets involved were published in the notice of public hearing. And if you'd like, I can go over those individual streets, but they were in the public hearing notice as a matter of record. So that public hearing notice was published in the Missoulian on November 21st and 28th. It's in conformance with your policy and in the state law, and I've provided you a copy to both Commissioners and your faculty staff member for the record of that legal notice. About the plans, you'll hear quite a bit about plans here. The project as proposed is consistent with both City and County adopted plans, including the Missoula Valley Unsewored Areas Study, 1996, the County Urban Comprehensive Plan adopted in 1998, the Voluntary Nutrient Reduction Program, 1998 also, Missoula Waste Water Facilities Plan adopted by the city in the year 2000, Missoula County Growth Policy adopted in 2002, and most recently, the Missoula Urban Transportation Plan, which you know is an issue of concern about transportation in the area. This was accounted for in this project. Back in 1993, the Commissioners and the City Council formed the Water Quality District. It was one of the first major efforts of that Water Quality District. They published an Unsewored Areas Study. It looked at eight unsewored areas in the urban area around the central city area that I'm in the outline of unsewored areas. Of those eight areas, West Reserve Area is ranked number two. This is a portion of that study out of the Unsewored Areas Study, showing the numbers of how they evaluated sewers or potential for new sewer areas. And the West Reserve Area, it was prioritized as number two based on some pretty dramatic factors. Nitrogen loading into the groundwater and river water, at that time in '96, there was estimated to be approximately 376,000 gallons, 376,000 gallons per day of septic waste going into the area. Water well density in the neighborhood was a consideration, probably in excess of 1,000 private water wells in the neighborhood. There was evidence of bacterial contamination documented by the Health Department in some of those private water wells, and there is certainly a vulnerability to private water wells and the shallow groundwater, which is in the neighborhood. What do I mean by shallow groundwater? You've seen some of these Water Quality Districts' signs around town. If you've been out on Third Street, you've seen this one with the water quality, water level averaging approximately 10 feet below ground at that sign. Really, that 10-foot fluctuates significantly with the seasons as the river water goes up and down, literally that groundwater goes up and down. And that shows a dramatic tie between the river water and the groundwater in the immediate neighborhood. To recognize that relationship between river water and groundwater, there was a study looking at protecting the Clark Fork River. And the result of that was the Voluntary Nutrient Reduction Program for the Clark Fork River Basin. This was a program that was an effort of many different agencies, the Department of State, Department of Environmental Quality, Tri-State Council, which involves Washington, Idaho, and Montana, Missoula, City-City Health Department, the City of Missoula, and of course, the County Commissioners as well were party to that agreement. County has a very specific role in the compliance with the Voluntary Nutrient Reduction Program. It includes a component and role for improving water quality in the Clark Fork Basin, and the primary role in the county is half of the urban area septic systems are to be abandoned by connecting sewer by the year 2008. As of this date, approximately 2,400 existing septic systems still need to be connected to fulfill this commitment. This also relates to the Comprehensive Plan. All of these plans build together. In 1998, the City and County worked collaboratively to create Missoula Area, Urban Area Comprehensive Plan. And you'll see more graphics similar to this, but you can generally see the outline of the Comprehensive Plan area around the community. Rattlesnake, Grant Creek, out to the Y, Mullen, Orchard Homes, Target Range, south to Linda Vista. And there's a perimeter that was established in that 98 plan. From year 2000, 1995 to 2000, a Waste Water Facilities Plan was developed in coordination with the Urban Growth Plan, Transportation Plans, and the Voluntary Nutrient Reduction Program. So this boundary looks very similar. The result of that facilities plan was a wastewater service area. If you'll note quite specifically, the Target Range, Orchard Homes area again is included in that service area. Not coincidental, there was a Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Plan for Planning Growth in Immediate Urban Areas as well. And the County Urban Growth Policy was adopted by the Commissioners in 2002, policy identified county urban growth that included the West Reserve Area. So once again, you see the graphic, this was not part of that county plan, County Urban Growth Boundary, coincidental with the Sewer Service Areas thing. There's Reserve Street, excuse me, Brook Street, and Orchard Homes, Target Range. Let's take a closer look at that neighborhood. Reserve Street here, Third Street down to South Avenue. The purple is the current city limits. The hatched area is government lands, this is the state lands, there's the Fort Missoula Complex, College of Technologies, and school lands, park lands, and such are the gray patch. The rest of the gray parcels reflect parcels with residential structures on them. Brief history, in 1979, there was 1,218 parcels with residential structures, but many of those parcels had multifamily, or trailer park, or other multiple units. So on those 1,200 parcels, there was basically 1,700 dwelling units. 1980s, there was 131 new parcels developed, 153 new dwelling units in the neighborhood. From the 90s through 2003, 225 parcels with residential structures, 245 dwelling units. So when you get to year 2004, this is the map of composite of the parcels with structures on them in the neighborhood. By the numbers, there's been persistent growth in the Orchard Homes, Target Range area from the baseline of 1979 through the 80s, there was about 8% growth, through the 90s, 10% growth in the last two and a half, three years. 2003, there's approximately 2% growth. This is the most important number I believe. The total residential units in the neighborhood is 2,233. That's approximate, you know, it changes daily, and that's of our records, that's the best records of the Department of Revenue and the City County Health Department at the state. And Missoula will continue to grow. Cruising through just magazines, one day, I said, "Ah, there's Missoula." So Missoula, the home of high country culture. So this was in a national magazine, beautiful spread. I believe Missoula's gonna continue to grow in the foreseeable future. It's a desirable place to be. There's also existing sewer in the neighborhood already. Big Sky High School is on City Sewer Fort Missoula Facilities, Community Hospital Village, senior residents, portions of Grove, Shore Street, Juneau Drive already have sewer service available within the neighborhood and are connected, there's pockets connected. Neighborhood considerations, we know that's why the majority of people are here today. There's been a comprehensive review of the neighborhood issues. An environmental assessment has been completed by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, review both the direct and indirect impacts related to the West Reserve Project. The EA or Environmental Assessment addresses 23 categories of potential impacts. Here's a copy of the cover sheet of that environmental assessment. It's available on the state's website. It is a product of the State Department of Environmental Quality. I've put a hard copy on the Commissioners' desk in your clerical record as well. So what's in there? It basically can have two categories, physical environment and human environment. The human environment deals with projected population growth in the neighborhood, public health and safety, taxes and fees related to the project, construction operations, neighborhood impacts, and other issues relevant to the neighborhood. So there's a variety of categories, and these are just the highlighted categories. There's more than that. There's also the physical environment, the environmental assessment identified physical changes expected to impact the community as a result of the project. Water quality improvements to both groundwater and surface water were expected for the project. Air pollution mitigation related to community growth. We understand that this type of project brings more growth potential to specific neighborhoods that those neighborhoods are close and adjacent to the city. They're within a mile to three miles of Reserve Street. When you compare the growth in those neighborhoods to the growth miles further, there's a net benefit to air pollution by building closer to town. Likewise, agricultural lands, there is expected to be through development, loss of agricultural lands within the neighborhood. That's offset by having less sprawl outside of the urban area of the community. So there should be a net positive for air pollution in the community and a net positive for agricultural lands preservation as indirect results of this project. Based on, I'm sure we'll hear some of the data.
Please let's be polite.
Thank you.
You'll get your turn.
Based on the environmental assessment and the plans and specifications submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality, they've approved those plans and specifications. Other matters. South Third Street paving, your county Public Works Department has been working in conjunction with the State Department of Transportation to bring state monies to South Third Street, portions of Clemens. MDOT is planning a project to overlay portions of Third and Clemens in the year 2005, and it is highly recommended that the sewer pipes be permitted to be installed prior to street Public rights of way use. Public rights of way are created in Montana state law for the use of the public, and we believe including public utilities. Cities and counties may review and permit the use of public rights of way within their jurisdiction, we know that, but public utilities have a right to use the public right of way, reasonable use of that public right of way. And you look at a foundation, this is an old plat of Corbin National Orchard Homes neighborhood, probably pre-1900 plat. Now, what does that say? And this language has been consistent for more than 100 years in the state of Montana, that the streets and alleys shown on that plat to be hereby granted and donated to the use of the public forever. So that public use is memorialized in the creation of the public rights of way. We know that annexation is also a topic, working in conjunction with the city administration. City proposes to delay annexation for a portion of the West Reserve Area, and the proposal is that building codes are enforced by the county. The city would agree to delay annexation, utilizing contract sewer agreements west of Tower Street until after January 1st, 2010. I'm sure that that will be an element of discussion as well. Cost for project development, we have invested money. The city of sewer utilities invested in excess of $200,000 in West Reserve project development. Based on those adopted plans, we've invested with the expectation of being able to fulfill portions of those plans. Utility easements have been negotiated and secured, several private property owners based on those plans as well. Have been engineering costs to design a project and create construction plans. We believe we're in compliance with the county excavation permit policy. Project's consistent with adopted plans, there's been an environmental assessment completed, and the Department of Environmental Quality has approved the construction plans. The plans and specifications have been reviewed and tentatively approved by the county Public Works Department pending this excavation permit. Expecting that the county excavation permit would be secured December 2004, we would be able to bid the project right after the New Year, hopefully start construction approximately March 2005, complete construction by the end of 2005, weather permitting and other factors, maybe in the spring 2006, but we're hoping it's a bid to have it be done by fall of 2005. We work with the adjacent property owners, sending them letters of notification related to service lines that would serve their property, and those service lines would be available for connection as soon as late 2005. And also allow that state paving job to go then fall of 2005, is what we're heading for if we could rule on it. So we're asking the Commissioners for permission to have a permit for connection. Jim Carlson, the Health Department has additional information for you.
Mr. Carlson?
I'm Jim Carlson, Director of Environmental Health with City-City Health Department. I'm here representing the Health Department of the City.
Jim, could you put your microphone up a little bit, because Patty has to translate all of this.
I'm gonna go through this quickly, because Steve covered a lot of this pretty well. From our perspective, the reason that we're here today has a lot to do with the plans that have been adopted by various units of local government, including the county, City-City Health Department, Health.
Can you speak up please, or give him the microphone? We can't hear you.
From the Health Department's perspective, a lot of the reason that we're here today is because of the history of plans that have been adopted by various units of local government, including the county, the city, City-City Health Department, our planning boards, Transportation District, and other governments. In the period from 1996 to 1998, a group was established, and it, through the public process, established the Urban Comprehensive Plan. That document.
Jim, would you use the hand mic so that you could get a picture to your voice? Thank you.
That document was developed, and it includes theme elements and priority planning tools developed by the Growth Management Task Force, which included quite a few of the elected officials of both the city and county. It provided for establishing urban growth areas, subsequent work by the Growth Management Task Force, and the stakeholders' planning process groups. In many, many public meetings, established the urban growth area. Subsequently, the Growth Management Task Force recommended in the draft wastewater facility service area be the same as the urban growth area. Finally, in 1996, then, that concept was included in the Missoula Urban Transportation Plan, which designated the West Reserve Area as residential infill and projected growth on that basis. Other plans which Steve has mentioned, is the Waste Water Facilities Plan update, which was conducted '98 through 2000. It essentially accepted the urban growth area, which was established by both city and county government, as the wastewater facility service area. So it's important to understand that as a consensus of local governments, they set an urban growth area, and then the city consented to having that be the same as the wastewater facility service area. Another plan that included this area was the 1999 Transportation Plan. At the Health Department, under rules adopted by the City-City Board of Health, one of the sections of those rules that govern septic systems and wastewater disposals is what's called in our rules, the Missoula Waste Water Treatment Plant Service Area, which is the same boundary that I've been talking about. It states that the purpose of this area in our rules and the requirements are to place landowners unnoticed that permission to use wastewater disposal in this area is temporary and is intended to be replaced with discharge to a public sewage treatment plant. And there are requirements that went into effect in '94, and upon amending the West Reserve Area into that regulation in '99, require that owners of new and expanded use septic systems waive the ability to protest sewer SIDs and agree to connect as a condition of getting that permit within 180 days after sewer's installed. And it requires that new subdivisions in that area place a waiver of SIDs and a connection requirement language on the plat. And finally, it requires that new subdivisions of three or more lots on less than, of five acres or less, build a shared septic system that can easily be connected to public sewer. And the reason for that is to install the local infrastructure at the outset, so that you don't have to go in and tear up folks' lots in local streets in order to connect them to sewer, to connect people all at one place. We found in Linda Vista, for example, where most people were paying $10,000 to $11,000 per connection, that the houses that were on a shared septic system ended up paying about $4,300, if I remember correctly. This is the boundary of the area as it exists in our regulations, but it's also the same boundary as the urban growth area and the wastewater treatment plant service area. Another regulation that, or, that regulation that Steve mentioned is the urban growth area, which is called out in the Missoula County subdivision regulations. Same boundary. In Missoula County zoning regulations adopted by the Commissioners, it also calls out the same boundary. I don't have an electronic map, but that boundary does show on those zoning maps over the opposite side of the grounds. The Missoula County Growth Policy, which was adopted in 2002, also uses that same boundary. It specifically calls out the fact that the city and the county have adopted the urban growth area based on the location of the sewer and other urban services. The 2004 Urban Transportation Plan Update also uses infill data, and one of the things I think is that's important from the air quality impact valley, why, is that it describes the fact that infill development should be a priority because it completes the urban fabric of the community, and most conditions result in lower levels of impacted growth in vehicle miles traveled, vehicle hours traveled. This is a map from the transportation plan that shows the future density, dwelling, excuse me, anticipated in a certain portion of the scope of that plan. Moving on to the public health aspects of things. In the West Reserve Area, there's about 2,700 total acres. 1,941 acres are in residential lots. According to the Health Department's count, there's about 2,411 septic systems out West Reserve and 375 units on city sewer. Using those numbers and the state and EPA's typical rate of 200 gallons per day, that generates about 482,000 gallons per day of sewage. This isn't the '96 numbers, these are today's numbers. That sewage, after percolating through the soil, goes into the aquifer, which is also the water supply source in the area. This is a map that has essentially several layers. The base map underneath is a normal topographic map of the Missoula urban area. The blue lines that you see are the topographic lines of the surface of the aquifer.
The depth below surface grade?
Yeah, it's the depth above sea level, actually, not the depth below. This is looking at the topography of the saturating zone below Missoula. As the water comes out of the Hellgate Canyon, a lot of water comes in through the aquifer below, but also a lot leaks out of the river. The river is a losing stream from the Hellgate, meaning it's leaking water out all the way down to about Reserve Street. Most of the water is lost in the stretch between the canyon and Orange Street. And it flows because the Clark Fork is about 40 feet higher in elevation than the vitteret down here. Clark Fork is a pretty riffly stream, lots of drops before it gets down to the confluence. The vitteret's pretty flat. The water leaks out and flows in a southwesterly direction into the vitteret and Clark Fork River, or the Clark Fork's a losing stream down to about Reserve Street, and it starts gaining back in this stretch. So the great proportion of water that feeds the Missoula aquifer leaks out in this stretch, flows southwesterly across the valley. Now, the other thing that you see here is the concentration of nitrate. Now, I'm not trying to indicate that nitrate is necessarily a problem from the standpoint of drinking water in the area, but nitrate does serve as an indicator of human impacts and the concentration or accumulation of pollutants as water flows through an aquifer. This is zero to This is 0.25 milligrams per liter, 2.5 to 0.75, 0.75 milligrams per liter is the same as per se, up to one and a quarter, one and a quarter to two, and two and above. So, as you go from the blue to green to the warmer colors, it gets more polluted. So, in, in the, as you move from out of the river in the green wells, it gets more contaminated. And then finally, as it gets out, it gets close to the Vitteret River, the levels do go up. There's been some questions about other wells. Certainly, we have, this, remember, the concentration's a function of two things. The volume of water it's dissolved in and the amount of stuff going into it. The problem down in Linda Vista and this area along the foothills is that we don't have this huge flow going through here. We don't have as much pollution water, so the sewage going into a smaller amount of flow causes higher concentrations. This well, I know, has been called out in particular. That was installed by a university student as a special study. It's right up against, it's a shallow well right at the top of the aquifer, and it's right up against the back of a big sump on the corner of Bancroft and South. So, it was installed to try to measure the impacts of street runoff on the well. From that standpoint, it's different than most of these other wells. A lot of these wells that you see here are drinking water wells, the ones with these certain dots in the middle are ones that are owned by the Water Quality District at this time. Most of them are installed with the intention of being representative of a neighborhood rather than representative of the source. I know there's been questions about some wells up in this area. Historically, Borden Chemical and Louisiana Pacific have been, Borden Chemical uses urea, which is a highly nitrogenous compound. In the past, they've had holding ponds, and there's been some on-the-ground spills of urea. There's a known plume that moves from that area, that industrial area, in this direction, and that's why you see these high concentrations here. The point I'm trying to make, though, is even after we've crossed Reserve Street, the water quality, as indicated by nitrate, if you follow these lines, remember, the water is flowing at 90 degrees to these topographic lines, it flows downhill. The water does get increasingly contaminated. Eventually, those nitrates go in the river, and it's in the river where they're causing a problem from the standpoint of the VNRP.
Pardon?
I just wanted to point out that there, although the area seems pretty rural, rural out west of Reserve Street, there are 691 lots that are less than or equal to one-half acre. It is an urbanizing area, but it has already been partially urbanized. These are the lots where infill is likely to occur. Those are the lots that are greater than or equal to two acres with only one dwelling on them, or no dwellings. Steve mentioned the unsued areas studied in Missoula. This is the cardinal ranking. The West Reserve Area did come out second, to a great degree, based on the number of septic systems in the area and based on the fact that it has fairly gravelly soils that are fairly close, and the aquifer is very close to the surface. As, as a health department and in the practice of public health, when we look at urban utilities as an area is urbanizing, and we've taken our local units of government's plans to heart and recognize that this is an urbanized area, as areas urbanize, public sewer and public water become very important. It's important, and has been shown to be important, in hundreds of cities around the world, to try to separate wastewater and drinking water for public health reasons. In particular, in an area like West Reserve, where public water is not supplied, then public sewer is absolutely essential. We're depositing our wastes in that area into the same body of water that we're getting our drinking water. Even if we were to supply public water without sewer, then, the impact of the sewage on the river would still be a problem that has to be addressed. There are a number of requirements which Steve covered in the VNRP, local governments agreed to in Missoula. Probably the most important of which here is the fact that we're required to connect half of the 6,780 systems that were identified back in 96 to urban sewers and to continue connecting them such that that total stays at half of 6,780. This graph shows how many we've connected to date. This, this one shows the number of total connections to this on-swear, new connections in the area. This shows the number of septic systems connected. This shows new development on septic. In order to meet our obligation of staying at 3,390, we have to add at least 1,958 by the end of 2008, and that's with the assumption that there would be no, no new septic systems in the urban area. Steve's number of around 2,400 is probably more accurate, once you need to add in that number as we continue to grow. Conclusions: Every major plan and land use regulation adopted by the county over the past six years has designated the West Reserve Area as an urban growth area. The urban growth designation of an area is an appropriate method of managing and mitigating the impacts of growth in the valley. Due to its proximity to the established urban area and growth in Missoula, further urbanization of the area is inevitable. West Reserve was prioritized second-
Jim, I'm sorry, let me change this. Okay, thanks.
Out of eight neighborhoods to receive public sewer, 691 lots west of Reserve Street do septic systems and are less than one-half bigger in size. They do not meet, from a size standpoint, the current requirements of the state of Montana in terms of septic system usage. It would be difficult, if not impossible, to meet the obligations of the VNRP without installing public sewer. Using the aquifer as a water supply and sewage disposal structure in an urbanizing area is not sustainable. The failure of the plan to plan for and install public sewer and water has resulted in unnecessary health consequences and subsequent excessive installation costs in innumerable cities throughout the world. Recommendation, it's our recommendation that you approve the city application right away. As an aside, I think it's important to include in the motion, directive to OPG, to assist citizen-initiated zoning districts lacking density zoning to develop and adopt density standards. And I talked to Cindy Clitty yesterday, and I said they would be more than happy to do that if you so direct. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the city that is planning to give us any comments? Okay, we will now go to public comments. Anyone who would care to speak? And I'm, I'm not one who says we'll do the yeses now and we'll do the noes later. You can come and say what you want to say when you want to say it, but I wish to make it really clear, our attorney has to leave here at 3:30 to catch a plane to do county business outside of Missoula. So, if he gets up and leaves, it is not an affront to anyone. Go ahead, please, Fred.
My name is Fred Stewart. I live in the Target Range area, on the end of South Avenue. I'm a member of the Target Range Homeowners Association. I promise to be done way before 2:30. Speak up, okay? As I come to these public hearings in a number of different venues, I often wonder, is anybody listening? And you probably have the same feeling at times whether anyone's listening to the things that you've said, and we've addressed this particular issue on a number of occasions. There is a petition, and I have to preface my statement by saying I stood out in the hall for quite a long time and was unable to listen myself to the things that were being said. So, if I request some information here that was presented, I will apologize for that in advance. There was a petition that was presented to the city, asking for a vote of the residents before this went forward, and it was interesting to look at the minutes of the committee that considered that particular motion, and the concerns of all of the city council individuals had to do with water quality and with the need to get infrastructure in place early on because it's much more efficient to do it that way. So, all of those things make sense. However, the questions that we've had for a long period of time also address our water quality concerns, and I'm not aware that, that those fairly basic questions have been answered, and I'm not sure that they've been answered well today yet. The first of those is the, the existing known leaks in the city's sewage system, and what about the need to take care of those on a priority basis first before expanding the sewer into new areas? Now, that's something that's based upon the city's own data, and yet, they seem to poo-poo that in tur, no pun intended. I wish I could have planned for that in advance. But, but seriously, I, I don't believe that that particular comment has been well addressed yet in terms of the need to fix the existing system before expanding it. And it would be, I believe, very important to know what the cost of repairing and maintaining the existing system is before spending money on extending the area. The, the second question that we tried to ask is to get some information about the timetable to get the unsued residences within the city limits online. And, and I know that there was some discussion about that just a moment ago. So, it seems to me to make the most sense to get all of those areas that are currently within the city online before trying to get new areas sewered. Now, you know, there's a code word for searing and annexation, and obviously, those things are inextricably hooked together. But really, my concern has to do with water quality, and it seems to me until some of these questions are answered, we really don't have a thoughtful approach to water quality in our area. And I do drink water from my well, and I am concerned about the amount of sewage and effluent that gets put into the aquifer. It's, you know, that's my major concern, and I'm not convinced that the approach that we're taking is really going to address that. Over the next 10 years, and some of this was addressed while I was outside, and so I'll have to ask for your indulgence to let me know whether the proper information was provided, but over the next 10 years, what are the likely effects on the pace of development in the Target Range Orchard Homes area? And by, you know, I, I saw your maps, and I would agree with that area as being the area of concern. You know, what's, what's likely to be the net change in water quality during that same time period? If you put more and more structures into an area, and each one of those structures has an increase in the amount of impact on the water quality and on the river, then the net result may be a downward net result rather than an improvement overall. So, I think that we really need to look at that long-term implication of development that goes along with the infrastructure that's being planned. There are decisions that are made by the county commissioners that in retrospect, we see what kind of an impact that has. For example, in Miller Creek, approving a level of density on the Maloney Ranch has now caused impacts throughout and beyond that area. So, it's very clear that the decisions that you make do have long-term impacts, and getting this sewer in place at this time is going to have a long-term impact. So, I would like to see the implications 10 years down the line, if we have the sewer, if we don't have the sewer, in terms of the number of houses that we would have, what's going to happen to water quality, what's going to happen to the average number of daily trips into that area? Because all of those increases above and beyond what would happen without the sewer really are effects of putting in this infrastructure that we need to be aware of. And I'm almost done. In terms of all of the areas in the Target Range area and new areas that would be using septics, I believe that we've not had good answers yet to the usefulness of currently available technology for onsite secondary treatment of septic systems. And a Waterloo system is an example of that. You know, to what extent does it make sense, and it could potentially be more efficient from a water quality perspective and from a cost perspective, for me to spend $10,000 to add to my current septic system rather than spending $10,000 to hook onto the sewer line, which has its own problems? Because the sewer is not 100% efficient at removing all of the pollutants that we need to have removed. And how does the cost of that onsite treatment compare to the additional cost, not just for the homeowner, but for the city as well, of building the infrastructure that's needed? And, you know, if this is a pie dream, and it doesn't make any sense, and it's stupid, then we should at least have the information available to us that would evaluate those types of systems so that we can get on with it. Because again, water quality is very important. You know, I, I often feel that many people in the city, again, looking at the comments of the committee that was looking at the city council committee that was seeing about whether we should get to vote on this or not, I often feel that many people think that the folks that live in Target Range must be pro-Magnons because they, they don't care about the water they drink and the waste that they're putting into the water system. And that isn't true at all. We really do care about it, but we're not convinced that this approach is going to have a net increase in this, in, in our environment. And with all of the attached development that will follow increased rate of development, we may end up worse off than where we're at right now. At that famous meeting back in August at Orchard Home Community Center, it was about 110 degrees in the building, and the temperatures just kept getting higher and higher, both in terms of the people. I, I remember that Barbara Evans pulled me aside, and she said, you know, so what are we going to do? And it was a rhetorical question because she knew, and I knew, that I didn't have the answer to that. And I thought that the county response at the time was really a thoughtful response to say, well, no, even though the city says we're coming and there's nothing you can do about it, it gave us some breathing time to try to get some additional information. So, this is not a rhetorical question for the county commissioners. I'm going to ask that you request the information for these questions that are asked from the city and share those answers with us prior to the time that you make your decision. So, I've got my questions here, I've just went over them. Will you do that? Will you get the answers and respond to us with those answers before you make your decision?
Would you leave the sheet with Adrian, and we will get back to that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next person. Next person, give us your name and spell it if it's an unusual name.
My name is Brooke Martin, and I am a homeowner in Orchard Homes.
Is that Martin?
In the R.
Thank you, Brooke Martin.
I would, I'm quite nervous, I apologize.
We won't bite.
I have, I would like to thank the gentleman from the Health Department for his presentation. I think they included a lot of information that I haven't seen in presentations before, but I have known or have felt were quite obvious. And the thing that concerns me deeply about the searing in this area is the same things that concern everyone else, who think we should be allowed to vote on it. I am concerned about densification of the area. But what concerns me deeply is the water quality in our area. We are also on a private well. And the stream flow, the Clipwalk Aquifer flows at approximately the same rate as the Clipwalk River does. And the stream flow diagram that the gentleman from the Health Department showed us demonstrated nitrate levels that flowed and increased through our area, through the Orchard Homes Target Range area. Now, those, the nitrate levels that do not flow through the city are low. The nitrate levels with the aquifer flow that comes through the city with its 6,000 septic systems that are not connected to sewer are high. And that is fairly clear to me from the diagrams and the stream flow diagrams that I see in his presentation, is that the nitrate levels seem to me to be, at least in part, due to the aquifer flow that comes through the city. There was also a statement that the gentleman from the Health Department made in his conclusions, that they are planning on using the sewer system to meet their VNRP levels. And searing, the, one of the conclusions was they do not feel they can meet the NRP unless this sewer system comes through our part of the county. The implications of that is that they are not, in fact, planning on providing any financial incentives to help people within the city connect to the sewer. And the implications from that is that they're not going to connect to the sewer if they need our homes to be connected to meet the NRP. And I would like to see the city's priorities to be to enable or help or put legislation in place to meet the NRP with existing sewer access rather than sending a sewer to a new area, hooking up those homes, and incorporating those houses in those numbers. I don't know that that is what their plans are. It seemed to me to be a fairly straightforward conclusion from his presentation. And I would like the county, if possible, to ask the city some of these questions too because I do have a private well in that area, and I am concerned about water quality.
My name is Gerard Behrens. I'm president of the Target Range Homeowners Association and spokesperson for Maintain Our Rural Environment. The city's proposed sewer main expansion west of Reserve Street raises many questions with no definitive answers from the city. The sewer mains are being sized for a capacity of 2.1 million gallons per day. This translates into a potential 10,500 homes, which is a 350% increase over the existing 2,200 units that they just showed us today. Traffic will increase as a result of 16,000 new vehicles and the potential for 60,000 new vehicle trips daily. Noise and crime associated with this growth will also dramatically increase. What are the city and county's plans for increasing the infrastructure for handling the dramatic growth in traffic? Will the infrastructure be in place before traffic develops, or will it come only after streets are clogged and the accident rates rise dramatically? Where are the funds necessary for such infrastructure? Where is the planning that should precede 350% growth? The sewer is the instrument of growth in the valley. Growth follows the sewer just as growth follows new road construction. Detailed planning and infrastructure funding should precede, not follow, the extension of sewer. Citizens of Mullen Road called for a completion of the planning process before searing. Unfortunately, their plan came after searing had been voted on. It's still being debated today. Too late, they learned, that the community will experience 11,000 new homes and 24,000 new vehicles. The airport learned, much to its surprise, that housing is being, housing and sewer is being planned in the path of the future runway expansion plans. Reserve Street already exceeds 2015 traffic projections. The Missoulian, Jenny Merriman, are now writing stories about extended waits on Reserve Street, 30 minutes if my recollection is correct. Other major arterials are experiencing similar problems. What are the city's plans for mitigating these growth-traffic problems? Will the city honor existing one-house-per-acre and two-house-per-acre zoning? Or will it routinely double density, zoning densities as it now does on the Mullen, in the Mullen Road area? Will the city honor the desires of the Orchard Home Target Range residents? We have asked the city for a vote of our community on the issue of searing and annexation. Our 1,200 signatures were ignored when a three-minute discussion of the city council denied us the right to vote. Does the petition of 1,200 citizens mean anything? What is the environmental impact of the Clark Fork River due to searing and increased density and resultant increase in effluent flows from the sewer plant? First, let's set the record straight regarding the effects of septics and how they work. The National Small Flows Clearinghouse at West Virginia University, and funded by the EPA, is the nationally recognized source for septic information. The summer 2001 issue of their pipeline publication explains how a septic works. Raw sewage flows from the building into a septic tank, and these are quotes, "or other pretreatment unit," where solids, oils, grease, and greases separated from the rest, separate from the rest of the wastewater. The effluent receives final treatment and dispersal through ground, underground via a subsurface drain field. The septic tank effluent is treated as the wastewater effluent slowly trickles from the, from the drain pipes, through gravel, and down through the soil. As the wastewater percolates or moves down through the soil, a variety of complex physical, biological, and chemical processes combine to provide treatment. Particles in the wastewater are filtered by, adhered to, or chemically bonded, or react with the soil. Bacteria and other organisms in the soil consume the organic matter in the wastewater and perform most of the treatment. As the drain field matures, organisms in the wastewater and the soil multiply and form a dark layer called the biomat on or near the infiltration surface. The biomat is a miniature ecological system. If oxygen is present, organisms such as worms, parasites feed on the bacteria as well as material in the wastewater. The biomat is where most of the pathogen removal occurs. I'll repeat, the biomat is where most of the pathogen removal occurs. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, where site conditions are suitable, surface soils, surface soil absorption is usually the best way to dispersed wastewater dispersal to the environment because of its simplicity and low cost. End of the quote. Now, that's a compilation of everything in this article, and I'll provide it for you. A qualitative analysis of septic systems was performed by the Buzzard Bay Project National Estuary Program of the Massachusetts Office of Coastline Zone Management. Conventional septic management, nitrogen removal efficiencies of three alternative septic system technologies and a conventional septic system found that a conventional onsite septic system with a drain field have a nitrogen removal capacity of 21% to 25%. So here we have a two-year study sponsored by the state of Massachusetts that shows a 21% to 25% nitrogen removal capacity. I'll point out that until 19, until 2002, the removal rate of the sewer plant for nitrogen was 28%, slightly better. Sewer plant has improved, and we'll get into that. It also found that the Waterloo biofilter showed a net nitrogen removal capacity of 60%. Separate water, wait Waterloo test data show that it removes 99% of fecal coliform 12 months of the year. Now, I must point out that all the studies that have been presented to you, the wastewater treatment study, the VNRP, all the data just presented to you by the Health Department and the city of Missoula do not address this information. They never have. The voluntary nutrient reduction plan was calculated and based upon the theory that 100% of the nitrogen coming out of a septic tank goes into the groundwater and makes it to the river. That is Flat Falls. Flat Falls. And this study proves that. The Missoula sewer plant, in the first eight months of 2004, removed 65.8% of nitrogen. Notice, that's very close to the Waterloo system. For eight months of the year, October 1st through May 30th, the plant allows 100% of fecal coliform to flow to the river because they turn off the UV lights. If we had a Waterloo system, we would have 12 months of fecal coliform protection at a rate of 99% versus 100% flowing into the river. Given these data, what will be the effect of searing and the resulting growth in housing? If the Orchard Homes in Target Range area grows from 1,600 existing septic systems and 8,400 existing systems, or the new calculation is 10,500 existing systems are put in, the nitrogen flowing to the Clark Fork River will increase, increase by 127%. Now, why does that happen? Unless the sewer plant has 100% efficiency at removing nitrates, if you increase the volume flowing to that plant over the existing volume by more than double, you're going to increase the nitrogen going to the river. So the city's plans to hook up these septics will result in 127% increase in nitrogen, not a decrease. There will be a decrease in the earlier stages, but as the growth continues and exceeds, stimulated by the searing, you'll find that we'll have a 127% increase. And the reason is, is that the explosive housing growth waste will overcome the 45% improved nitrogen removal of the sewer plant. It gets wiped out because you've just added more than double the amount of flow to the, to the plant from the same area. You've caused an increase in nitrogen to the river. The existing system of having onsite treatment limits the growth in the area to one per acre. In so doing, we are controlling the waste in the environment, and we're actually doing something to prevent further pollution of the Clark Fork River by having lower growth rates. Moreover, if the Waterloo system were installed in our community and existing zoning was honored, the Clark Fork River would be spared the negative pollution effects of 127% more nitrogen. The best way to protect the Clark Fork River is adopt the Waterloo system for new and replacement septics in our area. Searing will cause greater pollution, not less. We urge you to support the citizens of our area and deny the city's request for an excavation permit. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Mr. Behrens, would you come back to the podium, please? I have some questions for you, but you couldn't hear them. I would like you to explain the Waterloo system to me.
Okay. The Waterloo system is a, is a system that can be added, and I spoke to the inventor of this just yesterday. It's from the University of Waterloo. And the Waterloo system takes the effluent from a standard septic tank and puts in two, two separate tanks after that. One, it flows through a sand filter, which helps scrub the effluent, and also it puts it through a filter that keeps the, any solid material from going in. And then it goes into a second tank, which is, originally was in, was through using sawdust and sawchips. They've now advanced their program, and they're using a special foam particles that they have developed. And as a result of cycling the wastewater through that, it's essentially cleansed and Solids are removed at rates that are better than the sewer plant. Oxygen demand is dramatically lowered as a result of this process. And it has, like I stated, it has a high removal rate, 90-some percent of phosphorus, 60% of nitrogen, 99% of the, 99% of fecal coliform. Now, in addition to that, something that the county is already doing now is something called a gravelless drain field chamber. It wasn't what I mentioned here. And the gravelless chamber, if combined with this, allows you to have a smaller drain field, so it does well for replacement. And this gravelless, a gravelless chamber allows for an equal dispersment of the gray water, which has been now highly treated by the Waterloo system, over the entire trenching area. And the trenches are wider than the current trenches we're using. I'm starting to get almost technical. But as a result of this, this trickle effect does a much better job, an equal dispersment of wastewater, and does a better job at allowing the cleansing action of the soil to work. So that's a long, and I can get you data on it, and I can leave you all this information. And if you'd like sometimes, I mean, I could come and get other people, we get some experts here, to show you what these systems can do. They're being used in other parts of the country. They're being used throughout Canada. And it's kind of like, you know, I have a cellphone now. I had one back in 67, and it was about that big. And I have a new cellphone now that I can talk to, and it can go ahead and call people for me, right? Technology is advancing, and the septic systems go back to the 1600s, but they now have had major advances. However, it doesn't fit the mindset of cities that are expanding, that want to go ahead and have high-density growth, and they want to improve their tax base.
Hey, Mr. Carey has a question for you.
Jerry.
Could you please stop that? Go ahead, Jerry, please.
So this is, the Waterloo is added to an existing septic, correct?
Correct.
And what do they cost? I mean, what to purchase and install?
If you did it from scratch with a, with an existing septic tank, it would cost $10,000. If you, if you, if you already have a drain field, it'll, you know, you know, so it's $10,000 if, if you have a drain field and, you know, you're having to do all the work. But that's similar to what you're going to pay for now. It's going to be a little bit less if you did an existing septic system now, today. A little bit less. So it's going to cost more, but it's going to do the job. And it's an onsite system. And if it fails, you have one failure. But if the sewer plant has a failure, they have something called a bypass system. And when that plant has difficulties, what happens is, as part of their process, raw sewage can bypass and go directly to the river. That's a major failure. This is a minor failure that you can treat. If your septic system doesn't work, you go to somebody else's house to take a bath. All right? It just doesn't work. So you have a self, and what, what, what works with these systems are, and what our searing water district in Target Range- in Target Range has proposed, is that we have a system where they would administer contracts where you'd have independent bodies that are expert in this to check on these things and make sure they're working properly. And that can be done at a very minimal cost.
Thank you, Mr. Behrens. Jane, did you have any questions for him before we let him go? Clear back and sit down.
No, but if he wants to, these comments would be easier for Patty to decide.
Next person.
Good afternoon, I'm Lorraine Folsom. Because the city of Missoula had violated my constitutional rights to participate in the process of government, specifically in the processes involved in the Rattlesnake Sewer S.I.D., I brought suit against the city in March of 2003. As you know, the court found in my favor that the city of Missoula had in fact violated my rights. Through the investigation of facts in my case against the city, it became clear that city officials had not only violated my rights and the rights of other Rattlesnake Valley residents, but that in its legal submissions to the Montana Fourth Judicial Court, city officials had misrepresented the facts that the city had submitted false and misleading information to the court and that the city had lied to the citizens of the Rattlesnake. Rattlesnake resident Betty Nadelson documented the city's wrongdoings in her report before the city council entitled "Web of Deception," and I have a copy of that which I will leave with you. It was also discovered that falsifications were evident in the Rattlesnake preliminary engineering report done by the city's contractor Morrison Merrily and in grant applications processed by the city of Missoula. Falsified grant applications have been brought to the attention of the United States Congress. Because of the city's blatant violation of federal laws, including the National Environmental Policy Act, the Rattlesnake Coalition brought suit against the city of Missoula, the U.S. EPA, the administrator of the EPA, and the city of Missoula in May of this year in federal court. This little legal action is directed at the entire Missoula Wastewater Facilities Plan Update and its subprojects, including the Rattlesnake Sewer Project and the West Reserve Target Range Sewer Project, which is listed in Table 8.1 of the 1999 Plan as projects ISO 1 and ISO 2. At this time, as a matter of record, I'd like to ask the commissioners to provide answers to the following questions. Number one, has the city of Missoula informed the commissioners that the Rattlesnake Coalition federal lawsuit is addressed to the entire 1999 Wastewater Facilities Plan and its subprojects, including the West Reserve Sewer Projects? And number two, prior to convening of this hearing, were the commissioners otherwise aware of the scope of the Rattlesnake federal lawsuit? The city's boldness and apparent willingness to engage in wrongdoing is not limited to its interactions with Rattlesnake residents, and it is continuing. On June 30th of 2004, the city of Missoula conducted a public meeting on the West Reserve Sewer Project. West Reserve area resident Norman Smires attended that meeting. Subsequent to his interaction with the Missoula City Engineer Steve King, Mr. Smires wrote to the Montana Department of Environmental Quality in order to express his concerns about illegal activities conducted in the execution of the 1999 Missoula Wastewater Facilities Plan Update. Mr. Smires is a longstanding professional employee of the U.S. government. In his July 22nd, 2004 letter to Montana DEQ Administrator Jan Sensabaugh about the June 30th meeting, Mr. Smires wrote, quote, "With respect to the 1999 wastewater document, Mr. King told me that a National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, analysis was not required because no federal funds were involved, only state and local funds." City engineer Steve King, whose numerous falsehoods are now a matter of public record, misinformed Mr. Smires. Federal funding in the amount of $5 million was in effect applied to the 1999 Missoula Wastewater Facilities Plan Update. Moreover, additional federal monies were applied to the Mullen Road Sewer Project, which is clearly a sub-project listed under the 1999 Wastewater Facilities Plan. The Rattlesnake Coalition's federal lawsuit was filed because the city of Missoula has violated the National Environmental Policy Act in that the city has failed to comply with the act's requirement that an environmental impact statement be performed on certain projects that may have a significant impact on the environment. The Coalition's lawsuit further alleges that the city of Missoula failed to comply with the act's explicit requirements for consideration of alternatives. In this respect, County Commissioner Barbara Evans has herself expressed specific concern in writing to the Director of Missoula Public Works Bruce Bender in her August 25th, 1995 letter to Mr. Bender. Commissioner Evans wrote, quote, "The issues that I feel most important are how to allow for growth that will inevitably occur and still provide for protection of the aquifer and continue to look for other possible better searing options." She continues, "I would also think that small systems that could be used experimentally for independent homes or small subdivisions should be looked at as a means of providing alternative systems for individual homeowners." I should point out to the commissioners and to members of the public here today that alternatives are considered to be the heart of NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. I have a copy of Commissioner Evans' August 5th, 1995 letter with me to date for the commissioners. I believe that through the Coalition's federal lawsuit, it will also be shown that the city failed to comply with federal requirements for public participation and that the city of Missoula has repeatedly engaged in acts of misrepresentation and perpetuation of falsehoods. Historically, there's been significant, often overwhelming opposition to sewer projects in Missoula. Lawsuits have been filed over the city's activities in Bellevue, Waukeah, East-West Reserve, Mullen Road, and the Rattlesnake at both state and federal levels with good reason. We believe the city of Missoula has attempted an end around the National Environmental Policy Act in its sewer-related activities. Certainly, we would not want to see citizens subject to actions by the Missoula County Commissioners that would lead to further and deeper involvement in litigation.
Thank you, Ms. Folsom. Will you leave the comments with Adrian?
I will.
Thank you. The next person. Gary?
Good afternoon. Gary Botcheck, 2500 Gunsite Court, Target Range, Montana. Couple things. Jerry, your hard act to follow. The issue of the state environmental assessment, which the county received a comment of, and Mr. King provided a complete overview. I think it's important to note that probably 95 to 98 percent of that document is based on the 2000 City of Missoula Wastewater Facilities Plan Update. So you have to be careful how that's interpreted because it was stated by Mr. King that this was a state document. However, a huge amount of information presented in that document is directly from that wastewater treatment plan update. Secondly, involving Mr. Behrens' comment and a conclusion relative to the state's environmental assessment of two-point maximum sewer capacity of 2.1 million gallons. Ironically, out of the same 2,000 wastewater treatment plan update, there's a comment in there by the engineering firm that put that together that approximately that much sewer sewage is being, and/or, excuse me, infiltration rate is being added to the sewage treatment plant at roughly 2 million gallons per day average. So consequently, when you take the whole entire Target Range Orchard Homes area, maxing out at 2.1 million gallons per day, that equates to the infiltration rate, even with the upgrades and issues dealing with the improvements to date by the city of Missoula on its sewer infrastructure. Finally, coming out of some of the same information that was developed, primarily the sewage, the 2,000 facilities plan update, some information was provided through the Target Range Homeowners Association, which we took data from those models. And interestingly enough, what I'd like to do here today is let's remove the city limits and let's just take a look at ourselves from, excuse me, the community as a whole and let's talk about priorities as far as what we're going to do first. Without the city limits line, and if you looked at the documentation, it states that on an average, 1.77 milligrams per liter of nitrate exists in those wells along the east side of Reserve Street. And if you look at the area of wells along Third Street, at an average of 0.6 milligrams per cubic, no, per milliliter, excuse me, it's about three times. If you had a decision to make as far as a governmental entity, which area would you respond to first? Assuming that there's no city-county line, you're just looking at raw data that says what part of the system are we going to fix first? For me, you're going to fix the part that has the highest concentration of nitrate or you're at least going to look at. And to date, that doesn't happen. There's some serious questions to be answered. I think this permit is premature and I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. And I think more than anything, I think the people of Target Range need to have a greater say and a greater vote in a 300 or 400 percent increase in density over the next 10 years.
Thank you, Gary. Next person.
My name is Laura Howe and I live on Tower Street at Orchard Homes. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to comment on this and thank all the community members and neighbors that have had such good comments. I'm going to try to not repeat any of theirs because they've done such a good job. I'm going to try to play devil's advocate. Let's say that we analyze all these alternatives and sewer is still the right thing to do. Not that I believe that, but let's say, let's look at it from that standpoint. But, sorry, let me back up. I am disappointed that the alternatives are not being considered. Missoula is considered a pretty progressive community and not to be willing to look at other things that can be done, conservation incentives, land application of effluents, or even simple things like waterless urinals not being approved at the city, I think is not very responsible. If pollution to the river is a major issue, then why are there really no measures being taken to discourage pollution from its generation point? And don't we also want to protect the river and our oceans, not just the aquifer? I mean, so we're protecting our aquifer, but we're just flushing our toilets down the river and into the Columbia and the Pacific Ocean? That doesn't make a lot of sense for water quality. So if the sewer is approved, the major issue that's going to come up is growth. It's an issue that's been talked about a lot. The Orchard Homes Target Range area, as Steve presented, has experienced growth, but it's been pretty small. It's a semi-rural, it's not suburban, you can't call it urban area. There's a lot of open space, there's a lot of large lots, and it's growing somewhat slowly and that's what people are used to. This leads me to the issue of zoning. If this project is approved, I think the city is being completely irresponsible in proposing that the citizens initiate zoning to protect ourselves. A project needs to consider all the consequences, all the unintended consequences. A great engineering solution is not a good solution if it messes other things up. You know, engineers build great dams. I'm an engineer, so I can say this. You build great dams, but what do the dams do? You know, you can build great highways and you disrupt the migration of wildlife. So there are a lot of issues that need to be looked at, other than just, let's build a sewer system because that's an easy solution and we know how to size pipe. So if it is done, I think the city should be required to work in concert with the county for some legally binding zoning that would be implemented when the property is annexed. The city doesn't have a good record of respecting the existing zoning, so the fact that some of our zoning, including where I live, doesn't have any density limitation, even if we work to get a citizen-initiated district, which I think is jerking the responsibility of OPG onto us for the city's project, that doesn't make me confident that it would even be respected. So really, why go through that effort? So if the city was required as part of their permit to come to some sort of an agreement for zoning, I think that would be beneficial. And let's look at some creative zoning. This isn't a brownfield where there's no neighbors that are going to be impacted. Smaller lots, less than five or 10 acres, you know, density that's similar to the area, one house per acre, two houses per acre, larger lots, maybe allow denser zoning in the middle of it with some buffer areas that blend a little bit more to the existing neighborhoods. But like multiple people have said, this isn't just a sewer problem, it's not a water quality problem, it will also become a neighborhood problem. Maybe solve one, create others. What good does it do to create a community that nobody wants to live in? I mean, sure, somebody will move into my house if I move, but aren't we the residents now? Don't we matter? Doesn't what we think make a difference? So I'd like to see the leadership role taken in that if this project does proceed once it's based on sound science and technology.
Next person.
Laura, while somebody else is coming up, just to clarify, citizen-initiated zoning that already exists, I think the city was referring to, there's several zones in that area that citizens created mostly to keep commercial out without density. We can't change citizen-initiated zoning, it has to come from the people who live there. So if you don't come forward with this saying, we'd like to amend our zoning, we can't change it.
That's not what city Claudia told me. She told me it can be done both ways.
I think we're going to take a five-minute break and ask all of you to come back in five minutes.
Put me in here, city park committee.
No, you're fine.
Where's mine?
I don't even have this if you want.
Journal, I get back pretty quick.
Yeah, I would take March, April.
You know, we can get started just as soon as the ground serves thaw.
Yeah, you'll see a bunch of staking, you know, freshened up steaks, doesn't give you a clue we're getting ready to get going.
Okay, we'd like to go back into session, so I'll call the meeting back to order, please.
Can I make one?
Yes.
There was some concern, I think, from some folks in the audience because our attorney had to go catch his plane that he was talking to us when the meeting wasn't turned on. He just wrote down some questions that he thinks we should ask and we'll do that. So they'll be on the record, but we'll do that after more public comment.
Okay, the next person who would like to speak, please come up to the microphone and give us your name.
My name is Paul Laissey, L.A.I.S.Y. I've lived in Target Range for about 33 years and watched our enormous growth that we've had out there, which has been actually palpable because it's somewhat controlled by the fact that we don't have city sewer or any sewer, so that infill and added growth can go throughout there. The other speakers, I think, have covered the main points that most of the Target Range people, I believe, are concerned about. I would just like to add that my information that I have received over the last several years makes me really believe that our potential pollution of our aquifer is coming from the city, our direction. And there seems to be no effort to fix that. years makes me really believe that our potential pollution of our aquifer is coming from the city, our direction. And there seems to be no effort to fix that. There are records showing that there are pipes broken and leaking, some completely misaligned in the city right now, that are dumping raw sewage, not treated by a septic tank, totally raw sewage, into the aquifer, which, of course, floats our direction. The map that was up on the wall earlier, I think, shows that, the wells that are polluted and those that are not. I have two wells in Target Range, and one of them is 85 feet deep, which is, I think, probably fairly normal for that area. I've had the water tested regularly, and it has always come out with less nitrates than the bottled water that we buy in the store. One of the wells failed about four years ago, pumped and so on, went out, and I decided to put in a new system. When they pulled it out, that well, the foot valve at the bottom of the well was 22 feet deep. I didn't know that. I dug a new well at 80 feet. However, I had tested that water regularly also, and it had always been just fine, just as good as the one at 85 feet. So I really believe that pollution sources from inside the city are, might be a concern about our water quality. And that isn't just sewage, it's solvents and all the other industrial things that get dumped into the sewer systems or into the groundwater or into the 3,000-plus open wells out of every street corner in the city that just allow those things to go right into the aquifer. I think that the many septic tanks within the city now that could be hooked to sewer would be a good thing to think about before adding to the system. They could probably easily meet the number of septics to get hooked up by just doing those within the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next person. Wally. Pull the microphone down so we can hear you.
And I am standing up.
I didn't mean break it.
And I am standing up. I have quite a few prepared remarks, but I'm going to just skip most of those and make a summary. If you grant permission to the city to expand into the county, here is what you will be contributing to, in my judgment. Increase density far beyond our wildest dreams. Increased traffic and increased pollution over the skies of Missoula that are beginning to mock San Bernardino, California. We can expect increased strip developments if density increases out there, and they are nothing more than eyesores. You will advance sprawl into outlying areas, because many people will leave the area and move further out. So you're going to increase sprawl and not cause it to diminish. Your decisions will contribute to higher crime if you decide to concede to the city, because where you find density, you're going to see increased crime. Your decision will affect livability, our livability in the Target Range area, and our freedom of choice to live in a semi-rural area of the first rate. Rezoning will accelerate property values, while at the same time, the city is striving to create affordable housing. You will add to the current problems of congestion, without a doubt. Urbanization poses a threat to our reverb rural environment. Urban densities also cost the taxpayers more. And I, for one, refuse to use the public transit system, I rode my bike down here today for exercise, mostly in to save traffic meter money, because the transit system doesn't go where I go when I want to go there. So I absolutely, I'm a Montenon. I refuse to use the public transit system. I will use my automobile if Mayor Cadiz makes Best West Broadway down to Woodley. I will burn up a tank of gas getting to my destination. You will add to the commuting distance for those who want their space and move out of the area. In other words, the sprawl will continue, and so the people commuting to Missoula where they're employed, you know, you're going to create more pollution. And that's pretty much my comments. Those of us in the Target Range area have enjoyed this area for a goodly number of years. I can remember when fruit was grown out there, and one thing and another, and with increased infill, we're going to see that diminish. And so the character that has made Missoula great will no longer exist, and will become just another great, big, crowded city where you have to lock your door and your cars and be careful where you go at night and that type of thing. So help us protect our rural environment, and MORE, by the way, stands for maintain our rural environment. Take a look at my sign up out on South Avenue and 33rd Street. I spent a goodly amount of time and effort putting that up, and that speaks, I think, well for the community, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Do have to raise it for you.
Commissioners, for the record, my name is Rob Brock, B-R-A-A-C-H. I live in the Target Range area, also have acquired property in the Target Range area specifically for purposes of development. So my guest is here to lose my comments, you won't have to worry about chastising somebody that they clapped after him, or maybe they'll clap that I am. Also professionally, I work for a civil engineering, a surveying company, a land development company, a firm that's been in business for over 35 years in this town. And I'm going to speak as both a citizen, and I guess by a member of, living in the Target Range area, I'm a de facto member of the Target Range Association, but I definitely want to go onto the record to state that they aren't necessarily speaking the way that I see how this project should be approved. And for the record, I would like to see the project approved. But as a professional in the land development business and working for a firm, we have clients that are coming to us for advice about how they're going to develop their land, what the rules, what the regulations are, and for, as has been stated earlier, for 10 years, our clients in many subdivisions, we've been telling them, well, the rules say you have to lay in the dry line sewer, because we're going to be, the sewer plant, the sewer will be coming out into this area. So that's, we're looking at perhaps an inconsistency if that situation is resolved. We have zoning issues that our clients are coming to us with, where sewer may very well be in place, and we're just dealing with the zoning issues for how they can develop their property. And again, as a professional manager, and I've been deal, also dealing in personnel issues for a lot of years, there's always two sides to the story, and one of the things that seems to be happening here is that I think we have a lot of innuendo, a lot of half-truth, a lot of hearsay. And as I sit through neighborhood meetings on subdivisions and that, you know, somebody will say, well, if the sewer comes in, I'm going to have to hook up. Well, that's not the case. I mean, there are some specific rules that deal with when you have to hook up. If you're within 250 feet and you have a failure in your system, then yeah, you're going to have to hook up. You could have a situation, if you want to do a subdivision, the only way you might get that subdivision approved is to be able to hook up to the sewer system. But it's a choice. I mean, if Mr. Behrens, for instance, has a two-and-a-half acre parcel, potentially the way it sits right now, he could split that as it sits right now, create another one acre parcel at a minimum. Sewer comes in, perhaps he could get more dense with it, but nobody's going to force Mr. Behrens to do that. That's his choice if he chooses to do that. And we are talking about private property rights, and we're talking about playing within the level rules of the playing field, I guess. As a member of the MORE, I guess, or the Target Range Homeowners Association, I received a flyer yesterday that said there's going to be a 4,290 percent increase in density in the Target Range area. Now, that was just a mathematical error, obviously, there was some bad math there. But it's that type of innuendo, it's that type of hearsay, it's that type of misinformation, I think that is bothersome to me as a member of the professional community, as a member of, theoretically, de facto, member of that organization by virtue of living there. And I'm not saying that was an intentional thing, but I think that what we've got here is a bunch of people that are, for their reasons, and maybe most of, many of are good, you know, would be not in favor of this particular project. But I think we also have a very large, a good number of people that would like to be able to see perhaps a potential for them developing their property if they choose to. And it just makes sense to me that maintain our rural environment, I'd rather see it improved, and I think an improvement would be the sewer system, just from an environmental standard, or perhaps some other systems could be looked at. I wouldn't dispute that, maybe there's some negotiating room there between the engineer and others, just about maybe some other options to be pursued. But I'm just thinking that we do have some innuendo and some half-truth out there. I drew a different conclusion when I look at the flow of the water and the nitrate levels. I draw a different conclusion than a couple of other speakers that said that it looks like it's all being caused by the city. I don't think that that's necessarily the cause and effect, and I don't think, and that's what Mr. Carlson was saying either. So my conclusion, as an individual that specifically bought property in that area with the development potential, because the sewer was coming in, because we've got a zoning district that allows for it, and as a professional that's recommending to our clients and need to be able to tell them what they can do with their property, those that choose to want to do something, I'd look to get this resolved fairly soon, and do appreciate the opportunity to make these comments.
Now, now, please, let's not do that. Thank you, Mr. Brock. The next speaker.
I've lived in Missoula 44 years.
Good afternoon, listeners. I'm Norman Smyers. I've lived in Target Range here for about 10 years. Last name is S-M-Y-E-R-S. And I think my name was mentioned earlier, I was the one that wrote Jan Sensivol back several months ago about some of the comments. I will say the distribution of some of the information we received and some of the environmental information is slow in coming. Some of the stuff has been rather surprising to me that it even existed out there. I wasn't aware until about two weeks ago or less that there was even a updated transportation plan for the community that was issued in May. I've had a very difficult time getting that. In fact, yesterday, I tried to get it online, and it was just a little bit difficult to bring it up, the size of the computer. So I went on down to the library, and I went to the reference librarian, and he didn't even, he wasn't even aware that it was out. And when we started looking through all the records, the library didn't even have it. So this morning, I went back to some of the documents that Jerry had given me, and I requested personally a CD copy that I am in no position to comment on, because I have not received that information. But turning my attention to the document that was issued by the city on the 10th of, or the 1st of October, I will say that I'm kind of envious. It's kind of lightweight. I worked for the Forest Service for about 20 years now. I participated in some real big EISs, I worked on Yellowstone Pipeline, I know you were familiar with that, Barbara, you were around in some of the things. We worked on that for six years. We had public meeting after public meeting in the community in which the action was going to affect. We went all the way from Thompson Falls all the way out to places here in eastern, East Missoula, and also to Billings, Montana, because that was the point of origin of people there. I have seen nothing but closed meetings and hidden documents that are not readily noticed in the paper, no notification till they're out, and that kind of disturbs me. But turning to my attention to this October 1st issue, I read through it, I will say for a lightweight document, it's pretty thorough. But one of the problems that I got to, which was on page seven, it wasn't paginated, by the way, it was page six, number 19, was density and distribution of population housing. They went into a light discussion on the transportation, and that's where they kind of opted out and referred then to the 2004 transportation plan. Again, I have not seen a copy of that. But the thing that caught my eye was the next item down, which is 20. Social structures and mores. Is some disruption of native or traditional lifestyles or communities possible, is the question asked in that particular column? The answer was, no impact is anticipated. Now, in my letter to Jan Sensivol, which was the date of July 22nd, I happen to know, and I do not wish to point any fingers, but I do know that there's a 50-acre parcel just down the street, could be about four blocks, that could be developed, and that also is a terminus point for the sewer line. If we exclude about 10 of those acres, because I think they're in the flood plain, at least 40 acres. A conservative density for housing on those 40 acres would be five houses per acre. We've seen far more than that in the city environments. But anyway, if we did that, let's take a conservative view, it'd be 200 homes. Most homes come with two cars, two drivers, two trips a day, conservatively, most of us take more than that, I think. That'd be somewhere between 800 to, or 200 to 250 drives times two would be 800 to 2,000 people driving per day. Now, if you take the other 5 and 20-acre parcels scattered across Target Range into consideration, we could add a total volume of traffic, daily traffic trips in the Target Range, up to about 5,000 per day. Now, where do they all terminate at, or where do they exit? They exit across Reserve Street on Third, Spurgeon, and South. If we're not crowded enough on Spurgeon and South and Third Street currently, and Reserve itself, then I'm mistaken. What I will say in terms of environmental impact statements, in my experience in working on these things, they have to be comprehensive. They have to exclude all the elements in the decisions and in the discussions. This document does not quite bring them all together in a comprehensive means. And I will go on and add one thing here. Just because you have a bad decision does not mean the decision-maker can't select on that behalf. It's a disclosure document, and that's all it really amounts to. But when you take a look at the impact of this, I hope you're conscious in your thoughts about that citizens of Target Range are considered. One of the great things that really disappoints me about this community, and I moved over from what a lot of people consider to be a redneck community, and that was Billings in 1982. I found here recently very little concern with diversity, in the fact that everybody perceives within the city government, it seems, except for a few exceptions, Clayton Floyd being a good one, that we all have to have the same lifestyle in the community area, all the way from the rivers back towards the hill. We can't have any open space. We have to build on every possible inch of every lot within every community area, such as Target Range. I would like to see some diversity within the living styles that we have in this community. We all don't need to be in what we'd like to call, or my friends called yesterday, the Seinfeld mentality of downtown New York, where we're all walking, we're all dependent on cabs, we're all doing subway stuff, and we're walking down the corner areas for our Bernice Pibiscus or whatever else. I think there is a different lifestyle across the community, and that's what makes Missoula unique. It would be a sure shame to lose that in the future because of this. Thank you.
Next person.